Citizens must be recognized by the mayor, or in this case, the chair, and will be allowed to speak only once for up to three minutes per agenda item. And with that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Anyone have a conflict tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the City Manager Report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I attended a really great meeting last week on aging in place, a number of community members to discuss a future strategy for making Waterville a more age-friendly community for our senior citizens. The meeting involved breaking into some small groups. We discussed current issues facing our senior population and things that could be done to improve their situation. So, we then came back to a larger group and had a really great and thorough discussion. So, these meetings are going to be continuing. There's a new steering committee being formed, and I would like to see the city take a more active role in this area, and I plan to get involved here and to participate in future meetings and represent the city in this effort. So, some really great work happening there. We are looking at purchasing a generator to be used at this building, 46 Front Street, during times of power outage emergencies. This generator will also be able to be transported to other locations should we need to use other facilities as shelter. This equipment is obviously really critical for us to be able to operate a shelter during power outages, which has been something that's been lacking here in Waterville for some time. So, we plan to use capital reserve funds to purchase this generator, which is going to amount to all in approximately $13,000. So, that will allow us quite a bit more flexibility with this building during emergency situations. With the elimination of the Assistant City Manager position, it is now necessary to have a plan in place for the brief periods when I may be temporarily out of communication, which isn't often, but I have lost my phone in a lake before and things like that, so that does happen. So, in the event that I am out of touch for whatever reason, I am designating Chief Bill Bonney to fill in and be the point person in charge if I'm not available. So, again, these are brief occasions usually, but it is important to have a plan in place and some sort of chain of command if the situation arises. So, Chief Bill Bonney will be filling in as our temporary acting Assistant City Manager.
And so, failing his availability in the extremely outside, does it fall through the chain of command in the Police Department at that point, or does it?
That's a good question.
Or does it go to, like, some other department head?
I guess we'll have to think about that.
Okay.
You know, hopefully one of us is available, but, you know, maybe we, well, we'll put a third in line.
Yeah.
Well, I'll come back on that.
Okay.
Unless you have some particular ideas.
Well, I, no, I don't know. I mean, I think-
Speaker of the House or something, I think.
Right, yeah. I mean, you got, you got Public Works, you've got the Fire Chief-
Yes, there are many competent department heads. Honestly, even just picking one to fill this position was, there are many competent people here, so we don't have that challenge. But, good thought. Just a reminder, our summer paving projects are about to get started, so residents will see paving projects this year on Messalonsky Avenue, Spring Street, the Concorde's, Kennebec Street, and Lockwood Alley. As you know, as been reported at our last meeting, there will also be traffic disruptions on Appleton Street as we complete our new pocket park there. If you haven't seen it, you probably have, but Waterville Creates, the new installation on Castangue Square, Kennedy Flowers is now in place. Please be sure to check that out. They do light up at night, it's pretty cool, so a great display there. I just want to quickly thank the Rotary Club, who hosted me as their guest speaker this week. Good group there, thank you for the opportunity. Got to talk a lot about Waterville and all the work we're doing, so I appreciate their invitation. And lastly, just please sign up for our Mass Notification System for some great awards and updates, waterville-me.myfreewards.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have council comments or committee reports? No?
Okay.
Okay. I'll just say that the Housing Committee met last week, and we are going to be bringing forward a proposal for the council to, for the remaining ARPA funds for housing uses next meeting, so that's very exciting. There will be a revolving loan fund component and a grant component, so I'm excited to bring that forward soon. Public comments. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Come on up, Paula.
I didn't sign up.
That's okay.
I never needed to do that.
It's summer.
Good, whatever excuse, right? Paula Raymond Ward, seven, and I'm here simply to talk about the new program that happens at the Green Street Park, the formerly Sherwin Street Park, hosted by the AYCC. And just to update everybody on the cooperation we've had throughout the city, to let everybody know that it's a good thing that's happening for about 15 to 17 students on a regular basis from Monday through Thursday. We have Officer Bule, who's our Resource Officer, that pops in every now and again or on call if we need him. And we have Cheryl's Place, which is the pizza place that's fairly new over there. They're allowing us to use their dumpster for the rubbish that we have on a daily basis. Then Sunrise Bagel, Tiffany is bringing some arts using her bagels to the students, which will be kind of fun. And then Serena from Waterville Creates is also participating. And then we have a high school educator, Kevin, who is coming on Tuesdays and Thursdays to work with the students on an athletic basis, and he actually is a coach for the football and for the track and field teams. And so, he's diligent about coming and volunteering an hour or two hours of his time to work with the students, the young people. It's from K through five, that's the target audience that we've been working with. The city has provided a porta potty for us so that we don't have to worry about where they need to go to the bathroom when they need to do that. And Center, our Southern Neighborhood Association, is also offering their bike shed to store all the equipment and the activities that they have there for the youngsters. And of course, the AYCC provides a lunch every day, and April, who is the coordinator for this, is doing a fantastic job. She just keeps thinking of new and better ideas and things for them to do, and one of them happens to be with our Fire Chief, Sean. We're hoping that we can do the, we haven't, I apologize for putting you on the spot here, but we haven't, we were so excited about the first time that the trucks went out and hosed the children. April is hoping that that can happen again, and to coordinate that with Cheryl's Place, who wants to provide pizzas for the last day that we have activities there. And I guess my point is, is that classic phrase of "it takes a village," and we're just real excited. I go almost every day just to pop in and see if there are any needs that they have, and we've provided them with a few bits and pieces when she needs them, and she calls me if she has any concerns. And so, it's from almost every part of our city that everyone has been so gracious about working with us and making this a success for the children. And that's always a big deal for me, especially in the neighborhood that I was born and raised in and live in today. So, just thought it would be important for all of you to know that, and we're hoping for an even more robust program next year.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's great news.
Love living in Waterville. Love it.
Do we have anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'm, I have an amendment to the meeting minutes, so I'm going to move that we pull that item from the consent agenda, and we need-
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And just a show of hands? All right, all five, thank you.
Great. So, my amendment is just under the Community Policing Report section to change the Todd Buckmore to Todd Stevens, just a different Todd in the city, but we want to make sure that his name appears there, so that's it. So, we need to vote on that.
Is there a second?
Second. Okay, second.
Yeah, and just a show of hands, please. All right, thank you.
So, that was the amendment, so now we need to accept the minutes?
Can we just take all the consent-
Motion to read by title only. Second.
Okay, so that was a movement, a move, a motion to accept the minutes, and there was a second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we just do a show of hands? All right, thank you.
Great.
Now you need a motion to read by title only?
No, we still need to-
Get through the consent agenda here.
We still need to approve Resolution 138-2024.
Yeah, we didn't move to take the consent agenda as one.
No, we didn't.
I know.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
That's okay.
So, we need to take up Resolution 138-2024?
Yeah.
Okay?
Move to adopt?
Second.
All right, and just a show of hands, please. Thank you.
Now, Tom.
Now, I need a-
Motion to read by title.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
I move that we take the agenda out of order. I'd like to move Resolutions Items D through I forward in, to consider them now, just so that we can expedite the city employees.
I second the motion.
Is that okay? Does it make sense? Yeah.
So, you want to start?
All in favor?
Want to start with?
All in favor? Okay.
All right. So, that's Resolution 142-2024 now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, this is to amend the fire department fee schedule.
Mm-hmm. Great. Looks like Deputy Chief Frost is ready to tell us about this.
Yes, thank you. We're just looking to update our fee schedule.
Just turn the light on. Switch, switch on.
All good. We're looking to update our fee schedule. I think, Chief, you sent this to them, correct? Gives an outline of what we're looking to do with our fee schedule. It kind of updates it, gets it ready for some things that may be happening in the future down the road, so we don't have to keep coming back every time we're looking to change something. If you want, I can go through them line by line, or you can ask questions.
Is there anything notable that you would like to point out?
One thing we're looking to do is, you can see the add the EMS fees. That is a preemptive, getting ready for some legislative change. As you folks know, we have our community paramedicine program. Right now, there's no way to charge for any of that, but legislative change is looking like maybe we're going to be able to in the future. So, we just would like to add that in there so that we can get ready for that.
Makes sense.
The other big thing, I think, that you'll see on there is that we're looking to add an impact fee to our building fees, so that we have a delegated review fee, and on top of that, we have an impact fee. And we can talk about that more if you so choose.
Yeah, tell us about what's an impact fee.
So, right now, when we get a building that comes to us and we have to review it, we have delegated review, which you folks remember, we took over, I think, in December of last year. Basically, we took that over from the state. Right now, when we look at a building, and I have like a example of a fee right now. So, before we took over delegated review, the state FMO charged .0015 per cost of construction. So, a $200,000 building would be a $300 fee. Since we've taken over delegated review, we by law can charge four cents per square foot. So, you look at a $200,000 building, and I actually pulled one out that is kind of an example, that's a 3,060-square-foot building, so our fee is $122.40. So, we've cut the fees in half, which is a good thing, to try to get people to come in. But when you look at reviewing a building, it takes hours and hours to review a building. So, the $122.40 gets eaten up pretty quick in our review. And not only are we now reviewing a building, but we're also boots on the ground for hours and hours. Every time they call and they want us to look at something, we'll go out to the, to the site and look at that site. They need all the construction we look at, all the fire service stuff we look at, sprinklers, fire alarms. So, we spend a lot of time in a building. So, the impact fee would do two things. So, it would add .00075 to the cost of the construction. If you add that to our square footage fee, we're still at, so, and that $200,000 building, it's an extra 150 bucks. So, still, the fee would still be only $272.40, still less than what the state used to charge. But what the impact fee does is it helps absorb the cost of us going out into the public and doing a lot of inspections. But it also looks towards the future. We have a big building coming in, let's just say like the Front Street building. That building is going to bring in more people to the city. It's also going to bring in more storefronts to the city, which does impact public safety looking down the road. When you bring in, you know, I think, is it 60 to 80 units are going to be going in there of housing? Well, that's, you know, if you add two people per, per a unit, that's a lot more people, which could impact our emergency services. So, we're just looking for that one-time fee to help us absorb some of both of those things. So, that's what the impact fee would, would be looking to do. It still will be less than it used to be, but we're hoping to recoup some of that to help us for the impact of the future and, and for right now, to help with that review.
Yeah, I think that's well said by, by Deputy Chief, that's, you know, this is still less than they would have been paying previously when the Fire Marshal's Office was conducting the review, so that's just-
And it allows us a lever to be able to shift and adapt if we need- And it allows us a lever to be able to shift and adapt if we need to adjust that, that percentage in the future for any reason.
It could be adjusted in the future again, yes.
And so that is up to the city to decide what we're, what we're going to charge? I mean...
Well, I mean, their recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I know when we approved delegated review, we, one of, one of the downsides for the city was less revenue, right? But greater service to people wanting to develop buildings, shorter timeframe, all of that.
That is correct. And we still see that we're usually able to turn around a review in about two weeks, where right now, I'm not sure where the state lands. You know, we've seen, I know Dan and I have seen some reviews eight to 10 to 12 weeks still. And nothing against the Fire Marshal's Office, they do a wonderful job, but they are definitely short-staffed. And, and on top of that, you know, we just sat down, yes, the day before, with a potential developer. You know, they're able to come to us, sit down, talk with us, where they don't get that anywhere else. And I believe that is a big deal in the city of Waterville. So yeah, so we still, you know, still do delegated review. By law, we have to charge the four cents per square foot, but we're looking to add the impact fee to it. And on larger projects, it still is about half of what they used to spend. So it's definitely not unreasonable. And I do believe that other cities do charge impact fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the impact fees are a very commonplace thing out there. I was actually surprised to see Waterville didn't really have any, so this is very common out there.
Okay.
Thank you for your...
Any other questions from the council? Nope? All right, I think we can go to a vote.
And can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you.
So 143.
Resolution 143, authorize a purchase of a fire department pickup.
Move to adopt.
Second.
This will replace, will replace our 2008 utility, which I believe doesn't owe us a thing. That truck has done very well for us, but it is definitely time. It is not roadworthy anymore. It will not take an inspection sticker. It's sitting in our basement looking very sad. We use our utility in numerous things throughout the day. We have a large hazmat trailer that we have to tow in the event of a hazmat call. We do plow out our own around the station. And we also plow out the hydrants in the city of Waterville, because we take care of those. So we do need a heavy-duty pickup truck to be able to do those things. So we received four bids. Me being a Ford guy, I liked the F-350. But looking, looking at the pricing, looking at what we were able to get for trade-in, which kind of blew me out of the water, we do believe that the 2500 HD Chevy, which is the lowest bid, and after talking to our own highway department, they have these trucks, and they have little to no maintenance to them. And looking at our 2008, it's the same exact pickup truck, just newer. And I believe that that pickup truck served us well, so we are recommending that we buy almost the same exact thing.
What are you using now, now that truck is gone? What are you using now for utility truck?
So we piecemeal things together right now. We haven't had to haul our big hazmat trailer yet, so knock on wood that we don't until we get this pickup truck, because I'm not sure what will haul it. It is a very heavy trailer. So right now, we kind of piecemeal things together. We've put hitches on vehicles that normally haven't had hitches to try to get our boat around and our jet ski around. So that's what we're, we're kind of piecemealing things together until we get this pickup in. And luckily, there's no snow to plow right now, so...
And what would the lead time on the Chevy be?
I believe the Chevy was in September.
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks? Twenty weeks. They do have to build them still.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's move to a vote.
All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Accept the GOPIF Energy Efficient Properties Grant.
Priorities grant.
Move.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I don't think, I lied. We're, yeah, we're just, sorry. I did not, I did not read Order 144, 2024, so, yes.
So just to kind of give a Michael Hall, Community Development Specialist?
Michael Hall, Community Development Specialist. And just to kind of give a refresh over the grant, it's the Energy Efficiency Priorities Grant. And it was applied for to retrofit City Hall and Waterville Police Department with LED lighting, so that they become more energy efficient. It's been a longtime goal of the Community Resilience Committee. It's been one of the main goals of the Community Resilience Committee to oversee. And we won roughly about $29,009 from the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation for the Future to replace 176 light bulbs in both Waterville Police Department and City Hall. So we're looking forward...
Congratulations.
Thank you. We're looking forward to getting the work done in hopefully about six months, within six months.
Outstanding.
Nice work, Michael.
Standing.
So proud of you, so proud of you, so proud of you.
Nicely done.
All right. Any questions on this one?
I can, I can just say that I know Michael has put work in on this grant, but he, he's put work in on, on other grants as well, so behind this grant are other grants that he was, the community action grant that we weren't able to get, which conflicted with this grant. So even though this is the grant that we're accepting, there was work beyond just writing this grant that, that he did, that is kind of represented in this grant in some way or another. Wanted to acknowledge that.
Right, he's got a whole stack of grants he's working on.
Oh, yeah. I know, yeah. Yeah, he's kicking butt.
Okay. Brittany, is there anyone online?
There is not.
Okay. So I think we are safe to go to a vote.
All right, all in favor?
I'll take that money.
Thank you.
All right. Very good, thank you. All right, moving on to ordinance 145, 2024.
Amend the building and electrical code ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
My own?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, folks. I'm Dan with the Code Enforcement Office. I know most of you. What I'm proposing to do is currently the city of Waterville Code Enforcement Office inspects permits and inspects all electrical work within the city. Everything from the smallest residential job to the largest commercial job. The state has dedicated electrical inspectors where that is, all they do is inspect electrical components and installations for commercial projects. What I'm proposing to do is, since these jobs are getting bigger, electrical codes are changing, a lot of new components and new technologies are involved, is basically placing that permitting and inspection process back in the hands of the state inspectors. It's not, it's a pretty common thing happening right now. For instance, Augusta doesn't do any of their own electrical inspections. We would retain, because the state does not currently permit or inspect single and two-family properties, we would continue to do that. I think it would say we do almost 200 electrical permits a year. They take up a lot of time, and then the technology is changing, so it's been a little difficult for us to just stay on top of that. Any questions about that?
Couple of questions. Number one, how will the, what's this going to cost the city? Because we're not issuing those permits, so we're not collecting those permitting fees. Approximately, how much does that represent?
So we're averaging $11,000 in revenue, roughly. But if you put...
On the commercial side?
On everything.
Okay.
About 38% of that is commercial. So in our current budget, I've reflected this loss to go down to 6,000. However, our permit fees have also not changed in probably several decades. So as a part of this, I'm updating those fees to put them in line with what the state is currently charging.
Obset that a little bit.
But when you look at everything, I mean, it is a net loss, because every application has to be reviewed, inspections have to take place. That 11,000 is, we burned through that pretty quick, realistically. So I'm hoping that this, in our current budget, we reflected this change, but I did not put, include in the current budget this additional revenue that will come from upping our fees.
Is there any revenue that, you know, by liberating your time a little bit here, I know you're really, even with the, the addition of, of a second inspector, I know you are both really busy.
Yeah.
Is that going to, is, is liberating a little bit of that bandwidth going to give you the opportunity to recoup other money that may be laying on the table somewhere?
Recouping other money? I'm not sure. It will certainly free us up to spend more time inspecting and reviewing things on other, you know, plumbing and energy efficiency and structural components and zoning issues and property maintenance, things like that. As far as any other revenue that could come from that, I don't see it. We're already permitting everything we see and charging for that.
And so then, last question. How will this affect, and it could go either way, I don't, I'm not sure. How will this affect production time for commercial properties? Is this going to speed it up, slow it down?
So this is a process that electricians are already familiar with, because most municipalities are already doing this. The state electrical inspectors do that. It's uncommon. Or, or actually, I've got a list here at the end, I think it's included with your packet, of the municipalities that do conduct electrical inspections. And while it looks like a large list compared to the number of municipalities we have, it's relatively small. And the majority of them are not doing commercial inspections. These larger contractors that do these commercial jobs, they're used to dealing with the state. They know their inspectors by name. Usually, they go to the state first, and then the state has to say, no, you got to go to Waterville and get that done. So it really should help streamline the process.
Oh, okay.
And we know the state electrical inspectors, and if they're, we'll continue to have a relationship with them. And if we see things that concern us, we'll bring it to their attention. And likewise, you know, they may see a firewall on a job that they think is being built incorrectly, and they'll contact us and tell us, and we'll get out there.
But this is not really part of any contractor's calculus, whether to come to what, you know, affecting their workflow in Waterville, whether it's through the state or the local?
I don't see how it could, because it's just common practice.
Yeah.
If anything, we have a lot of meetings for these larger jobs, because the electricians, they want to know what we expect, you know, what's the, what's our process? And they have to kind of relearn the process for us. If they're dealing with the state, they already know the process.
Gotcha, gotcha.
In most, most, any towns like Bangor, they, they do their own electrical inspections. But I believe they have their own master electrician on staff to do those. So the towns that are doing these larger projects themselves, inspecting those themselves, they have a dedicated master electrician on staff.
And they're collecting enough fees to support that personnel?
I assume, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a coincidence, but you know, we, that we had the fire department request for change in permitting. I mean, we're, they're going the opposite direction, where they're doing delegated review, taking over from the state, and you're, you're saying, really, the state should be doing this. So, you know, obviously, it makes sense where this is a much more complicated, and, and growing more complicated with bigger projects and changing codes. But I'm just wondering, will this, I guess to Tom's question, will this, do you think this will impact developers at all? Will they, you know, sort of their wait time speed up for the fire department and slow down for code?
I, I don't think it will. For instance, for permitting, the, the state has a website, and they get an instant permit. We get an application, and we have to review it. We just don't have the same system as them. They're used to dealing with that system, and they know exactly. I, I think it's, by and large, a good thing. I understand the, the comparison that you're making. But they're, they're very different things, I think. I think it's a good idea, I think it's a responsible thing, to have people whose sole job is electrical installation, because it's, it can be very dangerous in these projects or, or just mammoth. And especially now, we've got multiple ones happening at once. And, you know, we're also inspecting and reviewing every other component in that building. So it can be pretty, a pretty daunting thing. And we don't want to be the people that hold up progress, because we just, we have to get through all these inspections and do things in a responsible way.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
There are a few things. You'll notice the copy of the ordinance that's in here, there's some red lines and changes in there. And that's really just updating to some of the verbiage in here in general. There's a lot of references in our ordinance to the International Building Code. And Maine's actual, actual building code is the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code. And the International Building Code is a part of that code. It's the commercial building code. So this is just updating that verbiage, it's kind of antiquated at this point. So all those references have been switched. What else did I put in here? The delegated review. Essentially, this is a mirror, copy and paste of what's in our public safety ordinance. But I thought it would be a good idea to also put it in our building permit ordinance, so that developers who, they aren't, developers aren't always going to look at our public safety ordinance. It's a good idea to have it in our building permit ordinance. This is word for word taken from that. The rest is verbiage about the current electrical code. Rather than citing a specific electrical code, like the 2020 version, it's whatever the current edition is that's adopted by the state, which is now the 2023 version. And at the end, it's just, at the end is what we just talked about. We're going to be permitting and inspecting single-family, two-family occupancies. This is a good thing with a lot of the rooftop solar that's going in and the heat pumps that are being installed, electrical vehicle charging stations. And it also gives us an opportunity to see what's going on in some of these buildings, because, say, if someone wants to split their service and add an additional electrical service to a building, CMP won't connect to that service until we go in and sign off on it. So it gives us an opportunity to go in the building and see what they're doing. And that's primarily how we find that an illegal conversion has happened. Someone has created a third apartment or an additional apartment without permits. So we, we're holding on to that, and that's a pretty useful tool.
That's about it.
Well, it sounds like that's a very good use of department time.
And delegation, too.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything for Dan? Okay, let's go to a vote.
Ordinance is first, yeah, show of hands.
Just a show of hands, please.
Yeah.
All in favor? Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks.
Last but not least, Ms. Beveridge.
All right, ordinance 145, amend the, I lied, I'm sorry. Ordinance 146, amend the zoning ordinance, parking downtown.
I asked Dan to stay here in case you wanted to hear what he had to say about this. So Councilor Finch is the one who brought this to you, and the planning board voted to recommend the changes that you have in your packet. Dan does have a few concerns about that. Yeah, so just explain this a little bit. Right now, you can have parking off-site if your parking is within 1,000 feet of your building. You can have no parking required, the Code Enforcement Office... The code enforcement office typically, Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. He typically waives the parking requirement if the building is within three hundred feet of either the concourse or the head of falls. So right now, what that means is within existing building, you don't have to provide parking. So these changes, rather than allow him to waive it, they actually include in the ordinance the language stating that you don't have to provide it. But instead of three hundred feet, we're going essentially to a thousand feet. This is confusing.
No, I got it, I'm with you.
Are you with me? A thousand feet of either the concourse or the head of falls because the downtown district, as described in the parking regulations, is actually all the area within a thousand feet of the concourse or the head of falls. Pretty much, I drew the circle and it's pretty much the same as the downtown map that you have in your packet.
So just to recap that. So what this ordinance would do would say that because any building within this area is within a thousand feet of a concourse, there would not be a parking requirement. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's typically not an issue with these existing buildings. We have the ability in our zoning ordinance to waive the parking requirement, which is what we typically do. They're existing buildings, they may have, you know, different uses, but the, the number of people doesn't drastically change typically. My concern is if new development happens within that area.
I just wanted to make sure you're close enough to the mic, but. We good?
Yeah.
Okay.
My concern is just if new development happens in the area. Building on top of existing structures to put apartments in, where are they gonna park? That's, that's the only thing. I know a lot of people talk about a lack of parking in the downtown area. So certainly, my concern is just bringing more people in and how that would impact that. So existing, we don't, I don't see an issue with it, really. But once you start adding more.
Yeah, that, that's exactly how I feel about it. I think it's a great idea to encourage housing downtown and right now it wouldn't be a problem, especially with one or two units. But what happens if we have, you know, thirty units? Or we have a large, for instance, you know, a large store that comes in, in the concourse? Then at some point, we are going to have to address parking in Waterville. And so it's just a question of when. I'd be interested in other, other councilors' thoughts on this.
Our Phase Two revisioning calls for various parking solutions downtown, right? So I mean, I think it, it's partially a vote of faith in that vision. I mean, I don't know where, where all the money is gonna come from, but.
Well, I'm not sure that, so I'm not sure that that process of looking at parking is underway yet. I don't, I know that it's not. I think it's, it's a project that we have ahead of us. I don't know how much money it's going to require, but I definitely think there's some planning involved here.
You know, I have a few, few thoughts. Say they pass it, I mean, what's, we all vote yes today. I mean, what would be the, what's the concern there? Like, what exactly are we concerned with by passing it right now? And, you know, from, you know, from the agenda, this is a unanimous vote from the planning board, which I was made aware that there are some landlords and some individuals that are, that were there specifically to encourage, you know, this, this, this vote. So if we voted for it today, right now, I mean, or my other thought was, you know, there's not really much housing right now, so why don't we wait until there is, perhaps? That's another option.
Right, I mean, I'm with you. I'm just, I'm just picking up on what Dan said about concern for the future. And that, that is, I don't have any issue with it today. I just think that we should have some mechanism by which we look at our parking in a year, see if this still makes sense. I mean, we need to have this larger issue in mind as we grow.
I mean, I mean, the trade-off here is, I mean, this whole, these kinds of recommendations are sort of a trend in, you know, across the country in like urban design circles where they're trying to optimize land use and minimize space that is, you know, not particularly vertical, that is, that's got, you know, these big parking skirts that are dedicated to commercial in the hopes of, you know, promoting pedestrian and public transportation options for, for people to be able to access and then like higher density, you know, usage of the space. There, the concern on the other side is that you're, you're actually gonna starve a commercial district of patrons because, you know, unless you can get your, the populace that's using that area to buy into your, you know, the, your notion of, of urban design, then you run the risk of, of, you know, kind of throttling back on, on, on the, the number of patrons to any kind of business. But it's also like a reflection of like mixed-use zoning and, you know, like residence, that the patrons live directly near where the businesses, they're patronizing or whatever. But in general, I, I think it's, it's fine. I think it's a good idea. I understand why the, the planning board went with it. And like, I'm kind of an experimentalist. Let's try it. And if we need to change it, we can change it. It's not that hard to change it.
So I just wanna also, I think this is consistent with our downtown vision plan when we talk about downtown residential infill. It's, it's consistent with our plan there. I also think it's, it would be a great idea for us to strongly consider a downtown residential parking permit in the near future that many other communities use. I think that would be an important step here if we're gonna do this and we should look at that sometime in the very near future.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of steps.
If I could.
Sorry, go ahead and then we have Councilors McCormick and DeBrito.
I think the thousand-foot component is a great idea. I think it would be a good idea to have, to give the planning board the opportunity to waive any parking requirements. I am concerned, for instance, the Front Street project, which has already been approved, it wouldn't be affected by this. But if it were to come forward after that, would have no parking at all.
Right.
A big place like that. So it's just the kind of thing that could happen. If something comes in and it's being proposed, I don't know if we could change it after the fact. That's just something.
But what kind of, what kind of, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut in line there.
Well, yeah, let's, let's give Counselor McCormick and DeBrito a chance to speak.
No. I, I understand what they want to do. I understand why they want to do it. It feels good to do it in July when there's nobody, there's kids are gone, everything is, plenty of parking, everybody goes for a walk. I got people that can't walk across the street, parking problems in the South End. I can only imagine how this is gonna be a nightmare in January during a storm when everybody's back in town.
Okay.
Okay, you can't get them. We had to redo the parking for the library because a spot that had been verbally agreed to for them was being abused by everybody else. In theory, great idea. In practice, not a snowball's chance in July. It's gonna, it's gonna come back to haunt us.
Well, I'll just jump in and say that one of the recommendations from the downtown vision process, where we did have a traffic and parking expert, was that shared parking is the way to go. And people who live downtown, most of them probably work somewhere else, so there's different times of the day when the parking is, is going to be used. So I think that, again, today, I think it's fine. But I do think we need to plan for the future.
I mean, unless part of the vision plan for the future includes a multi-story off-site parking lot or something like that. An example, coming up in a couple of weeks is going to be Taste of Greater Waterville. The girls that work over at the Dollar Store, the Dollar Tree, along that area, people are gonna want, be trying to come to work on that day and are not gonna be able to find a place to park so they can go to work. It's a one, it's a one-day-a-year thing, but if you're late for work already or you're going to be late to work because a parking issue? I mean, I understand what the theory and everything else is trying to get, and I agree with Tom, get people to walk, things like that. I can't get people to walk across the street in certain parts of my neighborhood because it's one park, it's parking on one side of the street with no parking signs down the other and they're parking between the no parking signs. Okay, in theory, great idea. Application, I think we gotta go back to the drawing board on this one.
Counselor DeBrito, did you wanna say something?
So I kind of agree with Dan is saying. I think for new construction, it's kind of like, I mean, for them not to have no parking for, depending on how big the building is, that's kind of like a little. And I do understand like the intentions of it, but a lot of these streets are not even walkable. Like, they're not accessible. You know, for somebody to go from, I'm looking at some of these streets to like a hundred, like, that's, that's a long walk. And so like, if I, somebody on a wheelchair wouldn't be able to do that. Like, somebody with a, like, even a stroller, have you tried? Some of these trees, like I'm seeing on this map, even with a stroller, it's kind of like, huh. But I, the only thing I see is that long-term of having new, new development come in, new housing, for them not to have parking, that's gonna be definitely an issue.
Could I just say, it doesn't prevent the developer from providing parking, it just says he doesn't have to. So if I were spending millions of dollars on a new building, I would provide parking. I wouldn't rely on the concourse.
But you don't have to, that, you don't have to.
Right, so I think with the head of falls, head of falls village, for example, perhaps the developer wouldn't provide quite as many parking places as he was required to by ordinance if this were passed. But he still would wanna provide parking.
Yeah, that's an issue.
And then also tenants can lease their own parking places. Tom Nail, for example, has parking right over here for lease.
Yeah, so this kind of strategy is becoming pervasive because it does in fact work in a lot of contexts. It, it works very well. Often, parking ordinances can, can really be a roadblock to redevelopment and, and forward progress in, in different urban areas. And so I would just ask Ann to perhaps expand upon that and talk about the, the sort of thought process and analysis that happened on the planning board. Can you give us, illuminate your, your thinking on the people who've thought about it a little bit more and are a little bit more familiar with that body of work?
Yeah, I spoke with the Chair of the Planning Board, Samantha Burdick, today just to make sure I know what her current thinking was. And she feels that this will help encourage new development and that we don't really have a problem parking. She subscribes to Colby's statement that we don't have a parking problem, we have a parking management problem. And also, she said something you said earlier, we can always try this for a while and if it doesn't work, then we can revise it again.
Yeah.
I do believe that Dan has a point when he says that it, it's okay for existing buildings, but maybe not as good for new buildings. So you could, you could revise this to, to stipulate that this requirement, this.
Did we make an amendment to do so?
So is that, so you, you gave me this sheet with your.
I wrote up something that you could use.
That's an amendment, right.
I thought if, if you all weren't excited about this, I would provide an alternative, but I, but given the planning board voted unanimously to support this, I didn't want to suggest amending it right off the bat.
But, so we could amend this to say no parking is required for apartments in buildings existing as of August 2024 in the commercial.
Right, so this, that would apply to only existing buildings and applies only to apartments. So this right now applies to commercial and, and apartments. But let's, I wanna make sure that Dan still would have the authority to waive it for existing commercial. We could, we could say existing commercial or apartments if.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Okay, then, then we just leave in the word of properties and, so it would read, no parking is required for properties and buildings. No, okay, it would be, buildings, no parking is required for buildings existing as of August 24.
So would that get you in a happy place, Tom? I mean, it's everything that's, it applies to what is already here. It's the world we have right now.
Yeah.
I'll play with the experiment, how's that? I'm not happy with it, I think it's flawed, I think it's gonna come back to haunt us.
But we will be able to change it if it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, we're talking about buildings, not units now, right? So if there are, if there are new units created in an existing building, that, that's included here.
Right, yeah, whatever the use of the building.
Whatever the use is, it's not required to have parking if it's an existing building.
Existing building.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, if, you know, if we, obviously, we wanna encourage housing. So if there are new units going into a building, then they do not require parking?
It encourages that, yeah. I mean, that's what's gonna, that is one of the things that's being encouraged by.
So for example, some of the redevelopment on upper floors, whether it's above Main Street provisions or the Arnold Black, those are existing buildings. New units created there would fall into that category where they would not need parking, correct?
And that's really the intent of this, right? To encourage infill and, in, in the buildings that are existing now. If someone's building a thirty-unit apartment building in the concourse, we want them to have parking. Yeah.
Correct.
But, okay, so I'll move that we amend the, the ordinance that Ann proposed.
The planning board proposed.
Planning board, yeah.
The planning board proposed this.
Okay, I, I'm confused then because.
The amendment?
The yellow, the yellow.
Pardon me?
I thought that the yellow highlight was your change.
Right, okay.
So that's what I'm.
That's the amendment.
We're already discussing the amendment from the planning board. I'm adding an amendment that you suggested. Right?
Without the, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it would read, no parking is required for buildings existing as of August 2024.
Exactly.
So, but that's not exactly what's written on that paper you have, so I'm scratching out.
Yeah, yeah, she's got it, she's got it.
But it's for the record, Brittany's got it, right?
I'll, I'll give it to you as.
Yeah.
So that's a motion we need to say.
I'll second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
That was on the amendment that we voted on though.
So now we need to move it.
We gotta pass it, we haven't passed it.
Right.
Oh, right, but, okay. So now, any comments on the, on the full ordinance?
There's no one online.
All right, so now we can take a vote.
I actually got a question. So when are we reviewing it? Are, are we setting up a date? When are we gonna review it, within a year or it's just gonna be a project until?
We did not discuss a time to review.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna be upon new construction or something like that?
Well, I mean, issues are gonna come to our attention through the planning, you know, process.
Okay.
You'll hear about it through constituents that are not impressed with our movement. That's how quick it'll happen.
Someone's gonna tell you that they don't like parking in Waterville. That'll be. That'll be new.
All right. Is everyone clear on the vote that we're taking now?
As amended.
As amended.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beveridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is the first reading, so we'll, we'll get to revisit it again.
And Mr. Bradstreet, thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, let's go back to the beginning.
Okay, I'm chairing the meeting.
We have one more. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So ordinance... We're actually moving on, I guess, to one, ordinance 147, 2024.
Amend the Licensing and Permits Ordinance, Outdoor Dining, Chapter 173, Section 10.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, so this item, I believe, was, well, it was brought forward by the mayor really to try to expedite the process for businesses downtown who want to have outdoor dining. As we all know, outdoor dining has been an evolution since 2020, and we've kind of got it down now, I think. We, we have another item on our agenda to approve a plan that really is very consistent with our rules. So, this is just to expedite any further requests that might come that are consistent with our ordinance as it's written.
I have a, just a, I'm sorry, Bron. I just had a, so this essentially eliminates, so anyone, like, say for instance, like, you can have outdoor dining in February. Is that what I'm doing?
No.
Well, I mean, because it says without a time restriction of April allows for outdoor dining without a time restriction of April 1st, so...
Actually, I think it's a little inconsistent because there's another place that says, that says no table, you know, no, nothing can come out before April 1st and it has to be November 1st.
So, sorry, so the requirement was removed from the April 1st, November 1st for standard outdoor dining, not the extended outdoor dining. Extended outdoor dining would still, you know, be from April to November because we're not going to close the street all year long.
Well, that's, that was my concern in regards like snow removal and things of that sort, but like, what's standard out?
Like, using the sidewalk, the four feet, they would have to keep that four feet for walkway for foot traffic or, or whatnot. So if a restaurant wants to have outdoor dining in front of their building or back of their building, they're able to do that.
So, like, I'm, I'm thinking of like OPA and how they're set up. Would that be able, they would be able to do that year-round?
No, so, so if you look at B, number 10, not install any pre-approved temporary structures or set up tables, chairs, or benches before April 1st and remove temporary structures, tables, chairs, benches by November 1st. So they have to have it removed by November 1st.
All right.
So how, how would the, how would the date restriction be able to be used by anyone if they can't put up tables or structures?
I think it's just strictly for tables, from what I understand, tables and chairs, but if they want to...
Maybe we're talking like tents and stuff?
Right, if they want to put up tents or like...
Or what OPA does, they have seating.
The pergola.
Seating.
Yeah.
Senses.
Okay, Councillor McCormick wanted to speak.
I was just gonna, I'm sitting here trying to read it again and perplexes me, but does it mean that we get an early snowstorm in October, the restaurant is responsible for cleaning the sidewalk because they're utilizing it for outdoor dining? I don't know how many people are going to be wanting to dine in November 1st outdoors in New England.
Yeah, the dates are not changing.
Other than it's at a bonfire.
These are the current dates used, April 1 and November 1. The day, the only thing that's changing here is the process. So those that are not seeking extended outdoor dining, going out into the street or road closure, that's still coming to council. But otherwise, if you're looking for just basic outdoor dining, that would be handled at the staff level in an expedited way to apply this ordinance. So any extended outdoor dining, it's still coming back here. Street closures, it's still coming back here.
But are we changing...
And the dates are still the same, inconsistent.
Well, why were the dates removed then in the ordinance?
From my understanding, the dates were removed just for standard outdoor dining, not for extended.
I don't know the difference.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this is simply to avoid the kind of confusion that we had last time where OPA sort of got out of line, or whoever that was, before coming to the council. The staff, the city staff can, you know, they can go to them and have the process be...
My understanding, my understanding was it was more meant to allow a business like Holy Cannoli that wanted to put out a table and chairs, not have to wait for a month in order to do it.
Correct.
Right? But I don't, I, I am concerned about removing the dates, April 1, November 1. I think if someone wants to have outdoor dining of any kind outside those, those dates, they should come to council. You know, we can have a winter carnival, you know, patio with heaters, but I think we need to approve that.
So I think we could easily accomplish that by just adding, so under A, 1A, just what's stricken there, that April 1 each year to November 1 each year, just keep that, keep that language. And again, just, this is for extended outdoor dining, we change. So extended is when they go beyond the sidewalk where they want, so like Proper Pig or obviously Lions Den, Silver Street. But if they're talking, if you're talking about just, you know, what, like, say, Sale of T Does, a few tables right in front of their establishment on the sidewalk, that would be handled just in-house in an expedited process, not up to come to council.
Exactly.
And if there's things that are put up, or heaters placed, or tents, wherever, that is required to be reviewed by the fire department and code. So hopefully, whether it's April 1st or, you know, before, after November 1st, if there are things like that outside, they usually, I mean, they can't go up without approval regardless.
Hmm, all right.
I think removing the, the stricken dates on AA would solve the problem for most of us here, yes?
Yeah, so I think offering an amendment to retain under A1A from April 1 each year to November 1 each year of, of each year.
To keep that.
So my question, I got a question. So the approval is going to be still in-house, it doesn't have to come to the city council?
Correct.
All right, well, I will move...
Standard outdoor dining, not extended.
For standard, yeah.
I'll move that we restore the language that was stricken in A1A.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on this amendment? All right, let's go to a vote.
All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going back up to...
139.
Resolution 139, authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit to Jason in January Fair Track, DBA, doing business as Holy Cannoli.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Why did he come to the table late?
Thank you.
I thought Jason would be out there early.
I don't know. Resolution 140, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Michael DeShane doing business as TJ's Classic Billiards.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
All in favor?
Thank you. And resolution 141, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a vitrular's license to Michael DeShane doing business as TJ's Classic Billiards.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Thank you. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second.